All right. Good morning, everyone. Dallas, would you come forward and give us an invocation on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
You, we are so thankful for the ability that we have to do that, Father. To come before you as the Creator and ruler of this universe is a privilege we do not take lightly, and we know that we can only do that because of the conduit that you provided in the form of your Son. We thank you for that. Father, just now, I want to praise you for the moisture we received over the weekend, and it was so needed, and we've been praying for it. I know a lot of people have, and you answered that prayer, and we thank you for that. And we're already seeing the fields starting to green up from that, and we're very thankful. And we just pray that that will continue, the moisture will continue throughout the summer. Father, we lift up our first responders, our sheriff's office, police departments, fire departments, Father, as they serve us in times of need. May you put a hedge of protection around them. Father, also with our military, we pray for the same, that you protect them and the endeavors that they undertake. Father, we are thankful for the place that we live. We just pray that this meeting will be in order, and we will make decisions that go forward that benefit this county. It's in the name of Christ I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Pettit?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson? Excuse, as I understand?
That's my understanding, yes. Approval of agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Second. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. May I have a vote?
Aye.
The next agenda item is elected officials, department heads and staff reports. Sam, do I have any of those coming?
Just wanted to give the board a quick update on 1041 regulations. We've been working on those and expect to have some proposed changes coming before the Planning Commission early in July. And the board, perhaps later in July then, we have to provide notice relatively soon here, so once we get that out, we'll have a better sense of exactly those dates. But looking forward to getting those in front of you and have Planning Commission review them as well.
And this has been reviewed by your staff more than once, and you feel like we're getting close to being ready?
Yeah, we've also had a consultant that has been working with us as well that's incorporated some different thoughts from other counties that have successfully implemented their regulations as well.
Thank you. Is there any other department heads or staff reports?
Yes, Commissioner Bart Greer, County Attorney. I did want to let the board know that I have put together at the request of the Board of County Commissioners, a policy regarding the roles and responsibilities of human resources. So that's something I think we are pretty close to having finalized and should be ready for adoption at the next board meeting.
So it'll become an agenda item, then?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there any other elected officials, department heads or staff reports? There being none, I've closed that part of the meeting. The next section is the citizen public comment. One of the things I want to remind each person that wishes to make a citizen public comment is that they state their name and their address, and that they have about three minutes to speak. And as I understand it, we also have three or four online things that have come in and which we'll have Sam read. I'll take the public comment of the people here first.
Good morning, Grant, Rick. My name is John Mott. Address 1-808-7, County Road 150, Chihuahua, Colorado. So I'm here today to talk again about the PUC Excel Power Transmission Line. In particular, and I'm a member of the Elbert County Environmental Alliance, but what I'm particularly going to talk about today for two minutes, 40 seconds, is about potential, the environmental impact statement. My understanding is there's three types. There's the county, state, and federal. When I went to Excel, one of the open houses, I was informed that they would not do a federal impact statement at all because they have nothing to do with federal, which some of us sort of believe to be not completely true. They're probably going to take some sort of federal funding in some way, shape, or form, and/or some federal impact if they cross or whatever. That being said, and the reason why the importance of the impact statement, everybody understands that transmission lines following right behind the transmission line are the wind turbines, and the impact on the environment, the economic, everything with those, I think, are going to be understated. The impact on them, I mean, site pollution. We used to talk about it years ago. There used to be the Indian-looking, and you know, the site pollution. We don't hear about site pollution anymore because we don't want to talk about those things. But in particular, with the environmental impact statement, one thing that is of concern, Biju Basin, where they're still proposing the line, and I've got some photos. We have, there's a neighbor of mine that is particularly interested in the eagles. Not only he knows of a nesting pair of eagles, of bald eagles, which I have photos of, but there's also a pair of golden eagles, which are much rare. The golden eagles are, if you've ever seen them up close, are ungodly-looking. I mean, they're awe-inspiring. So the picture of the nesting eaglet, there's eaglets and... And they're actually quite close to one of the proposed lines, but more importantly is the fact that, and these two pictures indicate this, these two pictures are eagles sitting on a crossbar. And that crossbar, right now, is directly underneath one of the proposed lines. The way that one of the proposed transmission lines is directly over top, and I'm not familiar, I don't know exactly where it is, but I could always find out from the person that took the photo. It's, I think, also the impact of noxious weeds. I fight it an awful lot and spend a lot of money on chemicals trying to fight noxious weeds, and I don't know what the county, how much they're aware, but it's a problem. I am already out of time. Three minutes goes by very fast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? No comments? I can't believe that.
Okay, what's the next? Not what's next, who's next?
Who's next? Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Politik, 34006, County Road 73, Chihuahua, Colorado. I'm also here on the behalf of the Elbert County Environmental Alliance. Today, we'd like to present to you a petition that we have had signed by community members, landowners, voting members of the community. And I'll just read it to you real quick. Elbert County is currently under great pressure to allow the construction of major facilities, utility facilities within our county. The county is presently in process of revising Article 16 of the Elbert County zoning regulations, which would govern these facilities. Additionally, more and more research is becoming available documenting the unintended but damaging consequences of these types of facilities. We, the undersigned eligible voters, landowners, and taxpayers of Elbert County, are asking our county commissioners to impose a one-year moratorium on Elbert County processing applications for wind and solar energy, generation facilities, and the associated power tie lines in all portions of Elbert County to allow the complete and well-thought-out revision and adoption of Elbert County zoning regulations. I'll provide this copy. We have 490 signatures on this. And what's interesting is the signatures, we didn't do any stuffing of the ballot box, so to speak. We went into the communities that already are served or have wind and solar farm generation, and these are constituents in those areas that are very concerned about not only the existing rules, in which we know you guys are reviewing right now, but it's the old-fashioned adjacency rules. Now, how does this impact, you know, we all believe that, you know, people should have the right to do what they want with their property, but we're more concerned about the adjacency impact to some of those landowners that, you know, have financial impacts due to the development of wind and solar farms on people's lands that they're adjacent to. I also have some proposed ordinance language for that one-year moratorium. These are samples from counties here in our state, Lincoln and Washington County, as well as counties throughout the United States, who have done the exact same thing to give you guys time and teeth to be able to really groom through our zoning regulations, to make sure people within the county, landowners within the county, are well-served by those rules and regulations, and are, you know, protected, especially when it comes to, you know, decisions made by those. So I present both of these to you, and probably the last thing is, go Abs.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Dan Mason. I lived at Yellow Pine Ranch for about 21 years now, here in Elbert County. My question today is, are we ready? Elbert County prepared for the near future. Looming shortages of diesel fuel, food, baby formula, and electricity will appear in the near future from all indications. What will be our response? How will we handle these issues? Additionally, a new plandemic lockdown is being prepared under the conveniently timed monkey virus. How will we respond? Will we lock down again as demanded by our masters in Denver? All indications are that we will. Elbert County Health maintains its party line agreement with the Colorado State Health Department regarding COVID virus treatment, disregarding safe, effective, and inexpensive alternate treatments that don't require taking any experimental gene-altering drug shot. I am inclined to think that the same obedience will be maintained. Meanwhile, over in Sweden, Switzerland, I'm sorry, Davos and Geneva, they're meeting right now, as we speak, to take away our rights under the UN's World Health Organization to control all medical response to any future medical emergencies such as COVID in the future, as they define them. Disregarding the unconstitutionality of this, our federal and state governments will slavishly acquiesce to the globalist demands, as we have done over the past two years. How will we respond? Since the last reaction to the public, to the plandemic, has been sheepishly meek, we masked up, we sheltered in place, and dropped down, closed down our small businesses while the big-box stores remain open, and obediently take a virus, a useless virus, experimental so-called vaccine. Imagine what the response will be when the lack of food, electricity, and diesel fuel. Are we ready? We need to plan for food, fuel, and electrical shortages that are soon to appear. Our response should not be reliant on other government programs and dictates. We need to seek and prepare our own independent responses. See, I've got a minute left. On another note, I would like to commend our county clerk, Dallas Schroeder, for his attempt to protect our election records from the tyrannical and maniacal Secretary of State Gina Griswold. Griswold has no right to tamper with our county voting records, as she has done. Griswold is apparently trying to desperately cover up her criminal involvement in voting fraud. There is no doubt that there was massive voting fraud committed in Colorado in the 2020 election. The contention, this contention is supported by the various independent groups that have been doggedly investigating this election. The decision by County Judge Kramer failed to protect the county voting records from the state tyrants like Griswold. I for one will vote against Kramer's retention because of his support of the petty tyrants like Griswold and Polis. Someone once said, fool me once, shame on you; fool me twice, shame on me. It's easier to fool someone than to get someone to admit they've been fooled. Let's admit that we've been fooled and not let them fool us again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I believe we have some emailed comments as well.
Yes. Would you go ahead and read those for us, please?
Yes, sir. Sam Albrecht, County Manager, reading on behalf of Amy Espinoza, who commented online. "Elbert County, very concerned about the proposed Excel Power Line project. The following briefly touched on the many concerns that have come to light. The negative impacts on wildlife, the lines will change migration patterns, and the Biju Basin has most of the water for this part of the plains, which the animals need. The negative impacts on community, health concerns, views, landowner rights. The threat of fire, trees, and dwellings. Less fire danger. East, fewer trees, dwellings, cattle eat grass down. Property values will decrease by 45%. No benefit for the county. Power is for metro area. Tax revenue gets decreased because of subsidies. Destruction of the environment. The subsequent wind/solar farms, which will be even more negatively impactful to the environment and community. People in town are excited because they think their costs will go down, but according to Colorado Sun, their costs will increase by 44%. Population density in proposed areas. May the well-being of our people, animals, and land trump profit, trump faster speed, trump financial benefits to those rewarded. May we in Elbert County walk in integrity. Sincerely, Amy Espinoza." The next one, the next one is from Lane and Debbie Carter. "Dear County Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns and recommendation regarding the proposed Colorado's power pathway being built across Elbert County by Excel Energy that will provide electricity to the Denver and Front Range communities with a new 345-kilovolt electric transmission line. We do not support this project for any reasons. There's not time to list them now, although we're happy to share them with you if requested. Excel Energy has proposed four routes to cross Highway 24 at different locations. They keep moving it farther east since there are few people affected, which is not a bad idea. The problem is that they stopped this process too soon, and now it affects the Simla community. If it is moved a few miles further east, Excel can utilize their existing transmission line right-of-way that crosses Highway 24 between Matheson and Lyman, and crosses Highway 86 a few miles west of I-70. This creates a win-win situation. Since there is already a transmission line there, it does not affect any additional residences. The eagles and birds in this area are already at risk. It will not destruct any additional land that will permanently scar the beautiful views, and Elbert County will receive the same compensation from Excel Energy. We made this recommendation to Excel in March and let her talk for the representative in May. She did not think Excel will consider this option because it increased the distance a few miles. It may require a new substation, and Excel did not address this when it was originally presented to the PUC. While moving the proposed transmission lines to Excel's existing pathway will increase the cost of the project, it is a cost that can be recovered as they supply electricity to Denver and the Front Range, and they may have to make an additional request to the PUC. But this is the least destructive and most desirable plan for the residents of Elbert County. Please deny Excel's Energy's current plan and encourage them to use their existing right-of-way for their new Colorado's power pathway project across Elbert County. Thank you for consideration and support. Lane and Debbie Carter, 24-800-County-Road-117, Simla, Colorado, 808-35." The last one is on behalf of James McCord. "I am very concerned about Excel's Colorado Power Pathway Project through Elbert County. We chose to live in Elbert County because of its beauty, wildlife, and natural surroundings. This project would run right past our property and ruin the place we have chosen to build our dream home. Power lines would destroy the reason we chose Elbert County to live our retirement years. Thanks."
Thank you. Is that all of the public comment? Okay. Would you like to comment?
Yeah, like we said before, we still haven't gotten an application or anything, so it's hard for us to comment on where it's going and stuff like that, but, you know, we've all commented before, we would like to see it go east, so we'll just have to wait and see what happens on that, and we do listen to citizens' comments.
Yes, my comment is very similar to Rick's here. I've talked to their lobbyist, I've talked to them, and we've tried to push it east, but we, like Rick said, we still don't have an application. The other thing I want to point out is, even if they started with the application process, they have not even come to us for a pre-app meeting. So I think that the regulations that Greg mentioned earlier on the 1041s will have them in place by the time an application comes forward. I noticed I said "I think," I can't promise, because it has to go through the Planning Commission and then through us, but, and we've got to compliment Greg on this, is we're taking this update of our 1041 regulations very seriously. Then with respect to the other public comment that, I think it was Dan Mason, is that right? That said that he's worried about future lockdowns in the county. Historically, and I think everyone in this room recognizes, the county commissioners, during the last avenue of this stuff, we push back. We truly look at each and every citizen, regardless if they agree with us or not, that we are individuals and we can make reasonably and very good decisions for ourselves. I can't promise what's coming down the pike, but I can say that usually, history begets the future, so let's just see how it goes. But we appreciate your comments, and we appreciate everyone's comments, and we take your comments seriously. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion items. The first item is discussion on policy management.
Commissioners, Sam Albrecht, again, County Manager. This one's mine. About several years ago, we started an initiative to document our policies, put them in a similar format, and put them out there for the public to know and to help the public understand, as well as staff, to understand how we manage things internally in a lot of different areas. The policy on policy management is the start of that. That was the first one that we, we had policies before, but not in a particular format. So this one was done in 2017. It's time to refresh it. I've got some suggested, I'll have some suggested changes at the next meeting on minor changes on the numbering scheme, the changing the required policies to suggested policies, probably keeping most of those sections, and then coming forward and asking for approval of that in two weeks.
Is there any public discussion with respect to this? There being none, that will be on the action items for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
The next item is discussion on policy regarding ballot initiatives. Dallas, did you want to kind of give us a little guidance, and then I'll have Sam?
I'll try not to steal any of Sam's thunder. This is a policy that I'm certainly in favor of. We have lots of citizens that come to us, and they would like to know how the procedure is for them to be able to put initiative on the ballot. As we've discussed many times, there's no petition process at the county level to put an initiative on the ballot, and so it's totally up to the commissioners. But we really think if we had a document that we could point citizens in direction to, that kind of gave them a basic outline and guidance of what they, what you all would like to see coming to you when they request something to be put on the ballot, would make things a lot clearer and a lot smoother. Likewise, this policy would include if the county was putting an initiative on the ballot, what procedures need to be done for that, or if a specific department was looking for putting something on the ballot. Just lays everything out, the timelines, particularly for us and the clerk recorder's office is important. We have certain deadlines that we have to meet as we put a measure forward, and when those get compressed, the chances of error is elevated, and so we put, you know, enough time in there for us to get things done and hit our marks on the election side. But I think having a policy like this just clears up for everybody, citizens, for what we do as the county government, and as far as putting initiative on. So I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Sam, when we discussed this this morning, you said that timing and some of these things are very important to have documented.
Correct. So Dallas Schroeder was exactly right. This is an item that we have seen a need for. We have pushed his office to, for the exact deadline on getting things on the ballot, and that's not the right way to do it. The right way to do it is do the planning upfront, get the information, the cost testaments, the demonstration of public support, the statement and the objective. Get that in front of you guys about the first of June, the first meeting in June, and then work through it so that we have action by the second meeting in August to ask the clerk to add that to the ballot, for you guys to ask the clerk to add that to the ballot. There are a couple of exclusions to this. One is certainly recalls. Recalls, the clerk has his own process on that that is not within BOCC approval, and he will follow those. The other will be PIDs, Public Improvement Districts. And I pulled out Public Improvement Districts because those are kind of special animals, and they take a little more legwork and engineering work if we're going to be looking at doing capital improvements for a group of people that want to tax themselves to pay for that. That takes a little extra time, too. So I see a very similar process, but maybe just adding 30 or 60 days to that. So with that said, this is the first draft of that. You may see some minor changes, or some changes, and I'll summarize any changes next BOCC meeting when we recommend approval of this one. And then we'll start bringing the other policies that we've done in the past forward. The county manager policy, we probably need to freshen that up, and then we have some other policies that we want to put into this format. Disposal of capital assets is another one that we want to talk about, but we'll try to get one or two on every meeting and not do 20 at a time.
So if I was understood correctly, it'll be on the discussion items at the next week, and then an action item the following, not next week, next meeting, I should say?
Next meeting, I want to move it to action.
So we'll take action on it?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? I know there's been some discussion in the community about ballot initiatives. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak, you may. Thank you. That item is closed. The next items on our agenda is action items.
First, I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing for the year-end supplemental appropriations for 2021.
Second. May I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Tony McCormick with Finance. As mentioned at the previous meeting, this is to discuss the supplemental appropriations that have come about during our normal year-end process and audit preparation. We are currently going through the financial audit, and I do want to preface this discussion on this, the action items for the supplemental appropriation, that the majority of these additional expenditures are being funded by external sources, primarily through federal funding, both through the CARES Act and the ARP Act or ARPA. Between those two, the county received approximately $4.5 million federal monies, and that has freed up projects related to COVID. and that has freed up projects related to COVID expenditures, as well as other opportunities for, for work around the county. So that's where the majority of the funding is, and we'll cover that in a little more detail here. I'm going to walk through the, the resolution. The first item is for the general fund, and we are going from a budgeted expenditures of thirteen point seven zero four million to thirteen point nine two zero million, and that's covering additional payroll costs. We had some increases across the county in the last year, being supplemented, or being provided for by, by federal funds, and additional equipment purchases. So the increase is two hundred and fifteen, or just under two hundred and sixteen thousand. Second item is for the LEAF Law Enforcement Assistance Fund. We are going from three hundred and four thousand to five hundred and fifty-five thousand, and that is being, the reason for that is for additional vehicles, some insurance replacements for some, some damaged vehicles that weren't budgeted for, that's being covered with capital lease proceeds and insurance reimbursements. Third item is the Grant Fund, increasing from five hundred and eleven thousand to just under one point one million, and that is for public health grant expenses and CARES grant expenses. Again, this is federal funds that is allowing for additional social distancing, personal protective equipment, and other activities that we, we receive grant funding for. It's being split between CARES activity and for the ARPA grants. Item four is the Retirement Fund, increasing from four hundred and forty-three thousand to four hundred and fifty-two. As mentioned in the previous item, with increases in salaries, in some wages, there was increases in needed contributions for the Retirement Fund, in implementing the, the pay plan. This increase of eight thousand dollars is being provided for with unbudgeted tax revenue. Item five, Capital Improvement Fund, increasing from six hundred and eighty-six thousand to seven hundred and sixty, and that's related to unbudgeted remodel, remodel projects to aid in social distancing, again, being offset by COVID-related spending, and that's a total increase of seventy-four thousand dollars. The last item on the resolution, item six, is for the Growth and Development Fund. It's, the increase is from one hundred and eighty thousand to one point three million. This is not, it's a, it's a reclassification of splitting the revenue and expenses that were previously listed or reported, netted together. So these aren't additional expenditures, per se, but it's a classification, but in order to show that classification, we have to split and recognize the revenue and expense. This is being funded with a, an escrow account, so, again, not additional expenditures that are coming out of the county's pocket, but a reclassification, but to, in order to get that presentation accurate, we have to show revenue and expenses. Those are the items. Any questions?
Is there any comment? Is there any public comment? There being none. Basically, this is just tidying up some accounting procedures from the prior year, of which most of them are funded by state and federal funds.
Correct, correct. So this influx of money we had in 2021 allowed for additional expenditures. We offset some existing governmental expenditures, and that allowed us to do other projects and other things that needed to get done, or still need to get done, and we were able to use these funds for that. So this is provided for by external sources.
Yeah, so as it relates to non-outside funds, the impact of this on our county fund balances is de minimis?
Correct. Yeah, these, yes. That's correct.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we approve the supplemental appropriation to the Elbert County 2021 budget.
Second, may I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing on the supplemental appropriation to the Elbert County 2021 budget.
Second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, consideration of the open space agreement. I'll make a motion that we consider that open space agreement.
Second. Vote. So. Sam, were you going to make some kind of a comment on that open space agreement, or Bart, which of you?
Yeah, Bart Greer, County Attorney. This is something that we've been talking about for several meetings at this point. We do have language that I think all the parties that are signatories to it and are involved with it are comfortable with, and so this is something I would recommend the board adopt at this point, and we can move forward with signatures and recordation from there. But this is, again, about a hundred and fifty-one acres that we are looking to get, you know, some additional approvals to, to be able to bring water and utilities into that location, possibly at some point in the future, and do some additional recreation opportunities at some point as well, such as, you know, walking trails and that sort of thing. And up to this point, with this agreement, the abilities to do those sorts of things have been fairly limited, so this expands that ability for the, the public in, in general and constituents of Elbert County that have another potential recreational or open space venue to, to utilize.
Okay, is there any public comment? Do you have any comments, please?
No, the prior agreement, like Bart said, was pretty limiting on what we could do with that property, so it really tied our hands, and there wasn't much we could do with it, and this does give us a better opportunity to utilize that property for the public.
Thank you. I agree with everything Rick said there. I read the original agreement, and it was very specific that you couldn't have water on it, you couldn't do a lot of things on it, and have, and this is located up off of Singing Hills Road, and that fire station that's there, kind of surrounds it. It's time for the public to be able to enjoy the dedicated open space, and this facilitates that opportunity.
I'll make a motion, we approve the open space agreement.
Second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the May 11th, 2022 minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the May 18th, 2022 special meeting minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second. Vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. That takes care of all of the action items, board planning. Did you have any comments or things that we should include? That's for the next meeting.
For the June 8th meeting, Amanda, do you, we're going to move those two discussion items forward. We'll have an HR policy for approval, and I, we're also looking at a potential resolution to recognize National Amateur Radio Week. Commissioners, that's all I have.
Thank you. The board planning will continue forward as we got, I want to announce that we do not have any land use applications to be heard at one o'clock this afternoon, so we won't have that meeting.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. The vote? Aye.
Aye.